Let's call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of March 14th.
We'll start it, thank you.
2023. It is 6:30 PM and the meeting is called to order. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Katie Jackson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation to Friends of Aransas and Matagorda Island Wildlife Refuge from the Hooping Crane Strut. We have a representative here. Great, we'll come right on up here. Our Andrew Loopy Ranch Crane Strut has been going on probably 15 years and it's a good fundraiser for folks that need the funding for projects that they're running for. This is for Friends of Aransas and Matagorda Island. This year the mouth of the check is supposed to be $1,510 and we appreciate y'all very much and look forward to doing this again.
We want to say thank you to the city of Rockport because this is money that is well used. For years we've done water for wildlife, so it's really fantastic that y'all keep supporting us and all those good runners.
Well, thank you very much. We look forward to doing this again next year.
It was a beautiful day out there, yeah, right?
Yes, it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is also a non-action item. However, it's a privilege for me to get to do this next thing. It's very seldom in a person's life that you meet somebody that you recognize as a hero. We a lot of times call all sorts of people heroes because they're athletes, because they're golfers, because they do things in our neighborhoods that are helpful to us, but occasionally we meet a person who has all the attributes of a hero and what they have done for this country and for the people of this country is something that needs to be noted and this is one of those cases. Jack Lyons was born in Louisiana in 1924 and whereas Jack Lyons moved with his family to California in 1934, where he enlisted in the United States Navy in 1943, and whereas Jack Lyons trained as a fighter pilot in Corpus Christi, Texas and was part of Fighting Squadron 83 attached to the aircraft carrier USS Essex, and whereas junior grade, Jack Lyons while on patrol located a Japanese warship task group composed of cruisers, destroyers, flagship of Admiral Yamamoto's fleet, the battleship Yamamoto, Lieutenant LTJG Lyons remained in surveillance of the task group and continued to report its position. Lyons' constant vigilance of tracking the enemy during unfavorable weather conditions while US forces planned an attack was directly responsible for destroying the Japanese task group, including the Yamamoto. The destruction of Admiral Yamamoto's prized battleship and its task group was a major victory and played a role in helping to turn the tide of the Pacific War. And whereas Jack Lyons was awarded the Silver Star, the Distinguished Flying Cross, five Air Medals, and a Presidential Unit Citation, and whereas after his retirement from the military, Jack Lyons went to work for Ford Motor Company, rising to the position of plant manager and general manager. He spent several years at the Ford plant in Dallas, Texas, and whereas Jack Lyons enjoyed his retirement after 30 years with Ford in California and Colorado until moving back to Texas in 2017 to be close to his daughter and son-in-law Lynn and Steve Powers. And whereas Jack Lyons has been a positive influence on all those he's encountered in Rockport, Texas, leaving a positive mark in his community and our country with his acts of kindness and his dedication to his country. Therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council, the city of Rockport, Texas, is hereby declare Saturday, March 18th, 2023, as Jack Lyons Day in the city of Rockport and call upon the citizens of Rockport to recognize his positive influence, his acts of kindness, and his dedication to his country. And witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Rockport, Texas to be affixed this 14th day of March, 2023. I would like to point out that Jack Lyons is a resident of our city and during his time in the Navy, he flew 60 combat missions in the Pacific. This man by actual definition, as Dan Rather had said, is part of the greatest generation and he is indeed a hero. And I'm very proud to proclaim this day in his honor. That will be his birthday, the 18th of March. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located on the table in the back of the training room in the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. All written comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting on any agenda item or subject matter will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council who have registered under the citizen participation form and have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace is prohibited by law and will be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. Before any action is taken, we'll establish a quorum being present. Roll call, Ward 1.
Here.
Ward 2.
Here.
Ward 3.
Here.
Mayor, here. We do have a quorum. I have two cards of citizens who wish to speak. First, Patrick Kane regarding fair housing.
Evening. I'm Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street. I'm opposed to approving Agenda Item 13 as presented. This item is only on the agenda because the city must affirmatively further fair housing to accept $500,000 in grants for street improvements covered under Agenda Items 11 and 12. I'm opposed for three reasons. First, the community-wide housing analysis isn't an analysis at all. There's less than a page of texts, most of which is more than plate. There's no basis provided to support waiving developer fees as recommended. There was also no pursuit of alternative solutions, of which there are many. Number two, furthering fair housing is not the same as providing affordable housing. Hopefully you understand the difference as it is a much broader issue. The broader issue being fair housing. And staff completely ignored it in their write-up. As an example, the inference we need more low-income housing tax credit facilities defeats a fair housing goal of achieving integrated and more balanced living patterns. Number three, Rockport does not need to waive developer fees. We are a desirable destination, just as Mayor Rios told Channel 3 News on August 11th, 2021. His words were, "People have discovered our little slice of paradise and are interested in coming to Rockport." He went on to say 1,300 homes were under construction or about to be. Most cities would leverage this desirability to squeeze concessions from builders, not the other way around. The simple fact is when you waive fees to developers, you stick existing citizens with the bill. City council shouldn't accept such substandard work from city staff. It's clear they thought they could simply check a box and instead of addressing what it really takes to further fair housing. If they're not up to the task, the city shouldn't ask for the free grant money as clearly it isn't free. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Second, I have Kristy Rutledge on several items related to the consent agenda.
Kristy Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I've signed up to speak on several agenda items. I don't know if time will allow that. So I think that you should document that this is probably going to be another example of how the ordinance is not being followed for public comment to allow citizens to speak on each agenda item. For some reason, that was squeezed into the citizens-to-be-heard portion. But there's a lot of things of interest here and some things that I have serious concerns about that I want to bring to your attention. Last week, or the last city council meeting, the tiers was brought up. There was a presentation of that. I understand that this is like a precursor to something that's coming. We know that this has been coming since 2018. I've seen emails to that regard that tiers was brought to the attention of the long-term planning team, and that's fine. But I want to make sure that we get this on the record. The tax increment refinance investment policy that was first submitted to the Rockport City Council by the Economic Development Corporation had this other public policy consideration. The city will utilize, this is a quote, "TIFs" to attract investment in underutilized areas and provide some tangible benefits and mitigate impacts to area residents, if any. TIF projects can exasperate property value increases that compound existing housing affordability issues and that potentially displace residents. Proactive planning and the inclusion of workforce housing in the project can help avoid displacement and mitigate impacts to existing residents. The city should provide tax and other incentives to achieve community and economic development goals in a particular area. There's several other items in this agenda packet tonight that do not have disclosure as to the cost to the taxpayers. That includes this community development grant. It includes the Rockport Center for the Arts. I would ask you to vote no on that. It looks like we're six months into the budget cycle and we are asking for a budget amendment with no disclosure. The city manager's report that is attached to the Rockport Centers for the Art, fiscal analysis is blank. It has zero information there. I see that we're increasing two-step pay increases for some new staff members. Again, this is a budget agenda amendment. This is an amendment to our budget. Are these items budgeted? Are they budgeted with our last? Is this a tax increase without disclosure of a tax increase? What are we having? Do we now have to maintain the Rockport Center for the Arts? That's a private nonprofit.
So I don't get to talk on the other agenda items, so I just want to put that on the record here.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed or considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in the normal sequence of agenda. Do I have any request to remove a particular item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove number 14.
All right. We removed number 14 from the agenda. Do I have a motion on the others?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, less item 14. Second.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number 14.
No, go ahead. I just, you know, I think that the agreement makes sense the way that it's presented. You know, there's a lot of background on this and I think for our citizens, I think it'd be helpful to have a little bit of background on this.
So we have a business and joint management agreement with the Rockport Center for the Arts. We are on the grant that helped build the center. This is my understanding. I was walked in and told to do this, but since we're on the grant, we have to have a co-management agreement. We are not interested in co-managing that facility, nor are we funding that facility, but we have committed to funding them through hot tax if they make an application. That does not mean we have to give them hot funds. It's just we, the door is open. You can't commit a certain level or amount of hot funds from year to year. That has to be given individually each year. So you're not committing any money to them or any hot funds even to them. The part of our co-management is if we hear of a lead, we'll send them to the facility to use. And that's basically it. If they are awarded hot funds, they'll be required to report just like any other agency that receives them. But it's a co-management agreement, but it's taking us out of the management of it because we don't need to be involved in that. That's not our forte.
And I believe I read in there it was clear that we do not have maintenance responsibility for the facility.
Say that again.
I believe I read that it was clear we do not have any maintenance responsibility for the building.
Right. If they call and ask us for help and we have available people, time, money, whatever, we will assist them, but we are not required to maintain any of the facility. That's correct.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept item number 14 as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We will conduct a public hearing for the purpose of considering abolition, continuance, or modification of the juvenile curfew ordinance. It is 7:48 and we are in public hearing. Chief round, something.
6:48, sir.
6:48.
What?
6:48.
Yeah, 6.
We need to change your watch?
Yeah. It is 6:43. 8. 6:48. Sorry. Sorry about that. My wife gave me a new watch. I didn't even change the time on it. Okay. Anyhow, back to the item. Is there somebody other than the police chief to discuss the ordinance?
I couldn't, no.
There he is.
Mayor and council.
That's right. For your patience as I solve my choking issue on my own saliva. We're back for the second reading, the second public hearing and the second reading of the city's juvenile curfew ordinance. And I think that we'd already answered the question about why we had to have a second public hearing. There is, the law says the word hearings. It's plural, indicating there's got to be more than one. It doesn't say how many. So if we're satisfied with two, then that's enough, but we can certainly have as many public hearings as need be to cover this topic. But there does have to be more than one. There's nothing that's changed in your packet that you have, except the addition of a letter from the Rockport Fulton Independent School District Police Department. The question that had come up previously was, why aren't they here? They do use this ordinance far more than we do. And I think one of the questions was, had I spoken with them? And there was perhaps some confusion. I hope that I was clear that Chief Tollis and I talk on a very regular basis. We're good friends. We talk about it on an array of topics all the time. We have discussed the juvenile curfew ordinance many times. The last time, I don't know when that specifically was leading up to that meeting, and as you guys had asked me whether they could be here or not, immediately after our previous meeting, I called Chief Tollis and said, hey, could y'all come to the next meeting in case there's any questions? They were happy to, but this is spring break. They're all off and this is the only time where they're out of town. They're off, on vacation, what have you. He's happy to have been. I said, listen, I think that a letter would suffice. It covers everything in there. He and I did have a discussion. I can certainly answer any questions that you may need because we use the ordinance in the same manner that they do. It is our ordinance. It's a city ordinance, so it is really for us and our governing body to handle this ordinance. That's why I present it and not the school district's police department. But nonetheless, I asked him if he would send me a letter. That's the only difference between this and what you had before you last time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the public?
Is this on the curfew?
Yes, it is.
What about kids that are homeschooled? How does this apply to them? My neighbor's homeschooled. I homeschooled my daughter for a little while, so it's a really important question for the daytime curfew.
Well, then they would be at home, so they're obviously where they need to be. They can't be out in public during the school hours. They either have to be at home, or they have to be in school, or they can be with their parent or guardian outside of the home or school, of course.
Anyone else? If not, I declare public hearing closed and it is 6:53. Item number 17, here presentation from Frontier Waste Solutions. It's later down on the agenda. They were making sure you stayed longer.
Good evening. My name is Matt Graham. I'm with Frontier Waste. I appreciate your time and letting me come and speak to you. Can you put that slide deck up, please? Okay, you can go to the second page. So the reason I'm here is for a couple of reasons. I wanted to introduce Frontier Waste to the council. On March 1st, Frontier Waste purchased Absolute Waste Services, which is one of the longest-serving entities in, oh, thank you, one of the longest-serving entities in the Corpus Christi area. They have 20-plus years of being in operation. Frontier Waste in the Corpus area has eight years. It's kind of small. So this slide just talks about Frontier Waste, our background. We were founded in 2017. It's a combination of basically three companies coming together, a North Texas company, a South Texas company down here in Corpus, and then some small entity companies that were put together in the Central Texas area to form Frontier. Our company, our senior management has over 150 years of garbage industry experience. I have 30 alone myself. We currently service out of here off of Flato Road in Corpus Christi. We have about 3,500 residential customers, 1,500 commercial, and we have many county areas surrounding Aransas Pass, the city limits that we service. We have roughly 65 employees in this area, 55 licensed units, and a long-term disposal contract is in place to ensure that we have the ability to service all the cities that are around that we provide. Let's see the next slide. This slide basically shows you all the different cities that we service and have affiliation with. There's 44 on this. There's actually nine more now with Absolute coming on. One thing I would like to point out, our company is very successful and has experience with municipalities. In the last five years, one of the largest cities in the Houston area, the city of Pearland, we actually won that contract and took it over in 2000, it was awarded in 2019. We took it over in 2020. It's 40,000 plus homes. That's for Frontier. That's in the last five years, the largest municipal contract that's changed hands from a provider. In the last 10 years, the next one after that, Frontier doesn't service, but I have experience with, is the city of Missouri City. We took that away from Republic when I was at another company. So we have a lot of experience with municipalities and taking them over, running them, and being a partner with those entities. This is just a little snapshot of our company. We have 350 collection vehicles. Our average age of our fleet is four years. Everything is new. The industry average is usually seven to seven and a half years. We have over $800 million invested in fleet and rolling capital. So what does that mean for the city? We're Texas-based. All our operations are here. If something were to happen, we can have, you know, more boots on the ground within four to five hours. We have experience with that throughout all the years with the storms that have happened with Harvey, tropical storm Allison, any events that have disrupted cities or municipalities, we have experience with that. We're drastically growing. We're averaging putting on one to two new municipalities every three to four months. So we're in an aggressive growth mode. We're a large company, but we're run like a small company, you know. It's not uncommon for our CEO, CFO to be out to see the people, come to municipality events, all the different things. So we're basically a large company, but we're run like a small one. We try and stay in tune with the municipalities and make sure that there's a partnership. We're highly focused on safety. That's the number one thing. Our trucks are out on the street in your neighborhoods and all that. We want to make sure that they're safe, everybody's safe in those environments. So then the next thing that I want to, so that's a little bit about Frontier, and I could go into more depth, but I know you're very busy and I just wanted to do a quick introduction of our company. Now, the real reason that I'm also here is we purchased Absolute and we were very excited about getting that company because it was going to give us a stronger foothold in the South Texas area. We basically doubled the size of our company here. We intend to grow and get many more municipalities and develop and just grow this business. Your city is one that we are very excited about. So when we heard that you guys were going out for a one-year extension with Republic, we were excited about that because that would give us time to get information together, provide something back to y'all to where you could have another provider to figure out what you wanted to do, competition in keeping everybody accountable. But we started to hear that there's a talk that it might go from a one-year to a three, four, possibly a five-year extension, and that concerns us because it would eliminate our ability to come in here and provide you, you know, some comparable pricing to provide service. So what I am asking you is please do not do that. Do not go farther than a one-year extension. I know it's too late to change anything on that because with the way trucks are and people, you've already got the path going. You need to do a one-year extension. Don't do anything longer than that. I can assure you that we want to partner with y'all. We want to be in the city of Rockport. Like I said, you were on our target list that we wanted to get down into this area. We are more than happy to provide information if asked for of what pricing might look like so you could start to get to see what that looks like. If you wanted to open up an RFP process, whatever y'all wanted to do, we want to be partnered with y'all. And then the other thing is with a four-year extension and not having anyone, anything else to compare it against you, I know everybody's scared that there's going to be 20, 30% price increases because they're seeing that at the grocery stores and fuel and all that. If you have multiple people in giving you pricing, it just causes it to be accountable and make sure that there is proper pricing that is done. Not saying that anybody that the current provider would do anything, but it just opens up your ability to see more things. I've looked at the pricing in this area. Your pricing is somewhat in line with what everybody else is, so I don't see why if you were really low, you could be afraid of a drastic increase. Everything is comparable and in the same realm of where it is, so I just don't see that that happening. But if you only have one person, it could. So I'm asking you, please, only approve a one-year extension and then open up an RFP process so that Frontier can come in and give you pricing. And I'll leave my cards with the city secretary in case there's any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do look forward to seeing y'all in 12 months and seeing if we can work out being your service provider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number eighteen, deliberate an act on second and final reading of an ordinance continuing the city of Rockport code of ordinances, chapter sixty-six offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article two, minors' curfew, setting curfew hours for minors, repealing all sections in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Counsel, we have any further questions for the chief? Since he's gone.
He came back.
If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the second reading of, for agenda item eighteen as presented.
I have a second. Have a motion, second. Any further discussion, debate? If not, I will call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you, chief. Item nineteen, deliberate an act on reclassification of administrative and special events assistant.
Mayor, counsel, as you know, shortly after I got here, our Parks and Leisure Services Director, Katia, he has been kind enough to contract with us while we figured out what we wanted to do internally. We posted this job externally. We got some good applicants. Our best applicant, sorry, our best applicant came from the inside. So we are going to promote Jean Camargo into the Parks and Leisure Services Director position. Yes. And with that, I would like to also promote the Administrative and Special Events Assistant to an Assistant Director because I would like to expand our breadth of the leisure services. So Jean will be overseeing everything as an umbrella, but I'd like for that position to focus more on leisure services and then provide some internal growth for that position as well. It is, it will be paid for out of the current budget, not asking for a budget adjustment or amendment or anything of the sort. Pay for it out of the money we have.
Any questions? Do you need a vote of counsel on this?
Yes, because I'm redoing a position.
If not, do I have a motion? Does that affect?
I move to approve agenda item nineteen as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion, question? If not, I call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number twenty, deliberate an act on reclassification of accounting clerk.
Okay, there was some reorganization before I got here. I've been here about six months now, looking at needs and services and things of the such. One of the positions that was created, that was a new position, or I think it was moved from another department to the accounting department, was an accounting clerk. I've decided that the bigger need is as an executive administrative assistant to provide assistance for Teresa, Casey, Kimberly, and myself. This position has not been filled yet. We have two other open positions in finance. I think it would be better use of the time providing assistance to the key administrative staff. The money for this will also be paid out of the current budget.
This position is already budgeted.
It's just. It's a budgeted position. I'm giving it a new title.
We've given it a new title.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item number twenty as presented.
Second.
Motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion, question? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda, city manager report.
I don't have anything new.
All right.
Oh, this is, we're speeding along here.
Item number twenty-two, reports from council.
Me first. Lots going on in Ward one. Today, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the mural down at Rock Bottom on their fence. It's absolutely beautiful. We've got the crawfish festival going on on the navigation grounds on the water side of Water Street. That's going to be going on Friday and Saturday, I do believe. Great things going on downtown. I am keeping my eyes open for opportunities for business to expand farther south. So if you've got any ideas, please shove them my way. I'd love to have some business down that way instead of the islands of Rockport. And other than that, all is good. Last thing. On the city website, frequently asked questions for the two thousand and twenty-three charter election information is available. You'll see it on the front page. You'll have the pull-down menus, and then the next thing is the frequently asked questions. Please read that. That is the city statement, and that's all we can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just, you know, we had a great weekend, this last weekend, with all of the excitement all the way across town and really enjoyed the parade and just the enthusiasm that we saw out there for Fulton Oyster Fest. They broke all the records. It was a very good day, not just for the town of Fulton, but really for the whole community that has to come together. Hoop and Crane Strut was successful as well. So just really thank you to the event organizers, both event organizers as well as our public safety teams who really worked hard that weekend, and there was a lot of activity, and y'all did a great job. Thank y'all.
Ward three, Brad?
Nothing to report, mayor.
I couldn't hear you. Nothing.
Nothing to report.
I have mentioned in several of our council meetings lately as the reports and council. Working with other entities around here, like, we need to be working together. We're getting a lot of good things done. With the Stormwater Drainage Committee, we are doing a lot of work toward getting a master drainage plan for our county, and the county and city are cooperating fully in this, trying to get this project done. There has been a lot of work done between the navigation district, the town of Fulton, the city of Rockport, and so forth, working on these projects together and trying to work to see that our community gets the benefit as opposed to some of the things that we may have done in the past where it appeared that we were in conflict with each other. And that has worked out very well, and I'd like to see that continuing, and I appreciate that. Other than that, I have nothing else. The city council will hold an executive session pursuant to the provision of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one, consultations with attorneys seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Concho Street General Land Office, GLO Drainage Projects. It is seven oh nine, and we are in executive session.